Welcome to the September 3rd, 2019 Pulse Falls City Council Meeting. Clerk will note that all council members are present. There are a couple announcements. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, GFOA, presented a distinguished Budget Presentation Award to the City of Pulse Falls for the annual budget fiscal year 2018. The city has received this award annually since 2014. The award is a prestigious award recognizing conformance with the highest standard for preparation of state and local government financial reporting. Congratulations to Jason and the Finance Department. And on Wednesday, September 11th, the Planning Division will be hosting a joint workshop with City Council, Planning and Zoning Committee, and City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission regarding an upcoming zoning code update. This workshop will be held at the Police Department from 5:30 until 7:30 in the first-floor community room located at 1717 East Polston Avenue. Staff will be introducing three new zoning districts, commercial mixed, residential mixed, and public reserve institutional, and multifamily design standards. I do have one proclamation tonight, and this is Suicide Prevention Awareness Day. Whereas suicide is one of the most disruptive and tragic events a family and community can experience, and there are 44,965-plus reported suicide deaths per year in this nation, and over 40 reported suicide deaths in Cootney County last year. And whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of deaths in the United States, and the 8th leading cause of deaths among people in Idaho. And whereas Idaho consistently ranks in the top 10 states with the highest suicide rates, and Cootney County's suicide rate is almost twice the national average, representing not only waste of human life, but untold suffering for the families and friends of those who die in this tragic way. And whereas for every completed suicide, there are 25 attempts. And whereas public awareness of this terrible problem is the key to preventing further suffering and loss of life, and risk, and the risk for human self-destruction can be reduced through awareness, education, and treatment. And whereas Suicide Prevention Action Network of North Idaho, Span of North Idaho, is a collaboration of Idahoans from the five northern counties committed to working together to eliminate the stigma of suicide, educate the community about the warning signs of suicide, and ultimately reduce the suicide rate in our state. And whereas Suicide Prevention Action Network of North Idaho is committed to excellence in suicide prevention, intervention, postvention, and suicide survivor support. And whereas Suicide Prevention Action Network of North Idaho is hosting the 11th Annual Break the Silence 5K Walk on September 14th in Coeur d'Alene to raise awareness of suicide, suicide prevention, and most of all, to remember those who lost, those lost to the tragedy of suicide. Now therefore, the City of Pulse Falls does hereby proclaim September 14th, 2019, as Suicide Prevention Awareness Day, and encourages all citizens to join us in this worthy observance dated the 3rd of September. And that strikes home to me. I had a niece who committed suicide in May, so it is a problem that you don't see coming. And if anybody is aware of it, or anybody becomes aware of someone contemplating, please intervene. You just never know who is, who is suffering. And it's, it's, you can consider it an easy way out, but it's truly a sickness. So be aware and help whenever we can. And with that, I will go from the sad to the happy. Mr. Captain Chief, Mr. Chief, former Captain Chief Knight. Could you please step up here? Well, let's go here, because I don't see a microphone. Let's go right here, Ben. You wouldn't know it if you look at him, but Chief has been with the city for 25 years. So he started when he was 12. And kind of like Chief Hoag, I think he started when he was about 12. But congratulations on achieving an anniversary milestone with the City of Pulse Falls. Through the years, your talents and efforts have been essential to our success. Together, we can take pride in your accomplishment. Our professionalism reflects your own skill and expertise. The quality of our reputation is grounded in your knowledge, creativity, and innovative spirit. We value your commitment to excellence. Please accept our gratitude and your, for your dedication to the City of Pulse Falls. We hope your award will always remind you of our appreciation. Signed by myself, and I'd also like to let you know that you can start to consider retirement in about 15 years.
Great. Thanks. Appreciate it.
I say it publicly quite often, I'll say it again. I believe our Police Department is second to none, and it's because of people like yourself and staff that really, really have created a good reputation for the city and for our Police Department. So thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, we need to have Item I, Gabrielle Estate Subdivision Construction Improvement Agreement pulled from the agenda.
Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Are there any declarations of conflict tonight? Seeing none, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the August 20th, 2019 City Council meeting. Item B is payables, August 13th through August 26th, 2019. Item C is mutual assistant compact between the City of Rathrum and the City of Pulse Falls Police Departments. Item D is updated agreement with the City of Rathrum for prosecution services. Item E is contract with JUB Engineering for engineering, engineering services for the Centennial Trail Bridges. Item F is North Place Second Edition Subdivision Plaid Application. Item G is Adult Software Sports Complex Request for Qualifications for Professional Design Services. Item H is Contract with Interstate Concrete and Asphalt for Paving at Black Bay Depot.
Any questions on the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up on the agenda is public hearing. Tonight, we do have one, and that is land exchange with Lam Storage. And if anyone wishes to testify on this, please fill out a form on the GIS in the back and bring it up to Shannon. With that, open the public hearing. Mr. Fair.
Dave Fair, Parks and Recreation Director, Mayor, council members. Before you tonight is a proposed land exchange between Lam Storage LLC and the City of Pulse Falls. It's located on Third Street, right next to the Community Gardens. And what we're talking about here is the exchange of 527 square feet of city property for 8,609 square feet from Lam Storage. And what we're looking at is just, the city would get the yellow section there, with that would come an easement for runoff of water from their storage units to that site that would be incorporated into the garden design, showing what can happen with, I guess, a swell and/or wet landscaping. What this does for Lam Storage is facilitate so that they can put in a building. We have a little peninsula of land that is in there, and that just opens up and squares off the property for them.
Any questions, Mr. Fair? Thank you, sir. Are we the applicant on this?
We are the applicant.
Okay. Is there anyone wishing to testify?
We have none.
With that, I will close the public hearing. Counsel?
I'd move to approve the Lam Exchange with Lam Storage.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda tonight is unfinished business, and we have none, followed by citizens' issue, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council on a city-related item that is not on the agenda. If anyone wishes to testify, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go into new business. First item under new business, Engineering Service Contract with TO Engineers for Design and Construction Services to Rehabilitate Shore Pines Lift Station.
Excellent. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Craig Bornpole, Utilities Manager for the city. And I'm speaking to you tonight about the Shore Pines Lift Station Collections Project that we are initiating, hopefully initiating design of, with authorization to award this design contract. So project location, the Shore Pines Lift Station is south of Ponderosa, to the west of Ponderosa Elementary, and you can see the, the Black Bay Park kind of presents where it is. It is near the shore of the Spokane River, and services a development right, the Shore Pines subdivision. So here's a picture of the, the existing lift station that is there. You can see the Spokane River behind it. So proximity to the Spokane River presents sort of a, a need to ensure that this lift station is in good operations. Failure here, you know, might impact the, the surface water there, which we are obviously going to avoid. So this is a sheet from the original drawings, stamped from 1984. This is more or less the, the original lift station that's there. This was identified in the draft collection system master plan that we spoke about earlier today, as a project of need for repair or replacement. Consultant selection, we selected TO Engineers off of the current consultant roster to assist with design and construction management services for this. They've worked with us on a couple of recent projects, the Tolmore Lift Station Improvement Project, as well as the 2019 Waterline Replacement. So we've, we've worked with them recently on, on successful projects. So we brought them in for a scoping session and evaluated the lift station, identified some age, age components that were in need of replacement, identified that there is some equipment there, including the wet well, that with some rehabilitation can be used again to cut down on the overall cost, and then additional improvements that might be needed to bring the system up to modern standards, modern code. Financial, so our request is for $38,339.50 for the design portion, that is a lump sum, and then construction management would be time and materials, not to exceed $38,892.50. And we've put in some contingency if there's unforeseen issues, for a total of $81,093. And this would come from the collection system capital improvement budget.
Craig, question on that?
Yep.
So the construction management, is that to oversee the construction, or is that to actually perform the upgrade?
To oversee the construction.
Okay, so the actual upgrade is going to be an additional cost?
Correct, yes. So looking at our schedule, this design portion would be done this winter. We would solicit bids, and depending on their estimate, if that was a formal process or not, in spring, with construction of that being 2020, we would come back to you for authorization to award a construction contract between now and obviously starting that.
Any questions of Craig?
Al? I got one. Craig, in the body of the memo, it indicates that the project is proposed in lieu of the budgeted Ponderosa Lift Station.
Correct.
It's just a timing thing, we're going to do this one now and do Ponderosa at some future date?
Yes, so we've allocated a certain amount of money each year to continue the, the needed upgrades to the lift stations and parts of the system. Ponderosa is an existing need for that upgrade, but dovetailing off some of the information, today's workshop is timely, work with the 12th Avenue Lift Station Upgrade will show us how successful that is to reducing flows to Ponderosa. When we know that number, we can better design the upgrade for the Ponderosa Lift Station. So rather than waiting, you know, putting all of the projects off, we sort of leapfrog this smaller project, it's an important project, but a smaller project, in front of the Ponderosa Lift Station, just so we can keep, keep up with our upgrades that are needed.
Okay, I was a little confused by the memo, but that makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion. I'd move, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the Engineering Service Contract with TO Engineers.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thanks, Craig. Next item on the agenda is ordinances and resolutions, two ordinances and one resolution.
Move to place the ordinance fiscal year 2020 budget on its first and only reading while, first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mr. Wilson.
An ordinance entitled the Annual Appropriation Ordinance for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2019, appropriating the sum of $68,109,61 to defray the expenses and liabilities of the City of Pulse Falls for said fiscal year, and establishing kinds and levels for established positions, authorizing a levy of sufficient tax upon the taxable property, and specifying the objects and purposes for which said appropriations are made.
Move to approve the ordinance fiscal year 2020 budget, and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next ordinance.
Move to place the ordinance driveway length and smart code parking amendment on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mr. Wilson.
An ordinance amending the municipal code of the City of Pulse Falls, Cootney County, Idaho, amending sections 1820-040, 1821-50, and 1824-020, to clarify the required length of driveways and the depth of required front yard setbacks, and authorize administrative exceptions for certain front yard setbacks. Amending sections 18A-20-070 and 18A-20-090 to require principal structures in zones SC2 through SC6 to be oriented and accessible from the street, and amending the parking requirements in zones SC4 through SC6 to require additional parking be provided on-site, and adopting a new section 18A-20-105 to authorize a fee in lieu of providing parking within, with certain limitations. Repealing conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing for the publication of this ordinance by summary, and providing an effective date.
Move to approve the ordinance driveway length and smart code parking amendment, to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. One resolution.
Move to approve the resolution smart code amendments to Chapter 6, Tables 10 and 11.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next up on the agenda is Administrator Staff Reports, Demographic and Building Report.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm and council members. My colleague Jamie Hayes and myself, Ethan Porter, are both planners here at the City of Pulse Falls, and we're here to present the future projected population, as well as the building report for semi-annual, semi-annually building report. So with that being said, I'm going to let Jamie discuss population projection.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. The purpose of the 2019 Population and Estimated Future Projection Memo is to inform you of the changes in population and housing in Pulse Falls from the years 2018 to 2019. This information is based on the recent single-family and multifamily residential permits that have been issued. Pulse Falls had had an estimate population of 35,000 roughly in 2018, and 36,747 in 2019, which results in a population increase of an estimated 1,740 people. This translates into a 4.97% annual growth rate from 2018. Currently, the annual average growth rate from 2010 is approximately 3.25%. Pulse Falls may have an annual growth rate for 2019 between 7 and 9%, increasing the average annual growth rate between 3.6 and 3.8 generally. Pulse Falls will exceed a population of 40,000 by the year 2020. This is just a visual to show you what the graph is projecting as far as population, what is circled as the years 2020 and 2021. With increasing population, there is also an increased demand for housing. The result of this is 290 new single-family residents and 538 multifamily units for the 2018 development season. Individuals residing in multifamily housing in Pulse Falls is approximately 24.74%, while the national average for multifamily housing is roughly 39% for larger cities. Vacancy rate for multifamily in Pulse Falls is currently 2%. A flat rate vacancy has been estimated to be 4.5% by Federal Home Loan Mortgage Corporation, Freddie Mac. This is from the KMPO, showing that Cootney County has a market vacancy rate for multifamily at roughly 2%. The median household income in Pulse Falls as of 2017 is estimated to be around $50,000. Regionally, the average rent for a two-bedroom is 850, necessitating a $34,000 annual income or, this equates to 2.3 full-time jobs at the 2019 minimum wage of $7.25 per hour. Zillow estimates that the average home value in Pulse Falls to be roughly $288,000, with a median value of over $315,000. The appreciation is estimated to be 11.5% over the last year, and is projected to be an additional 5% for the coming year. During the past three years, the cost to own a home has outweighed the cost to rent, even though the cost to rent has increased nationally by roughly 35% since 2008. The annual estimate for the Pulse Falls population will reach 98,358 by 2040. A population this size will require an estimated 24,000 housing units, with at least 5,793 of them being multifamily products. Do you have any questions as of right now?
Jamie had one. When I looked at your single-family permits for '18, it was 290?
Mm-hmm.
I think the numbers I had seen, it was quite a bit higher than that. Is it?
Well, and this is just with the data that we, we have had up to June.
That was for 2018.
2018.
So did yours, it said '18, I believe. Was that supposed to be for '19, 2080 or '94, 2019 year-to-date?
Let's go back.
Right there. The results of this is 290 new single-family residents for the 2018 development?
Maybe that is true. Yeah, I'd have to go back and research it to give you a better answer.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
So as you can see from this table, it's the total number of permitted dwelling units per residential project type. And so out here is kind of broken down, as you can see in the columns and rows, but more so highlighting that the 2008 recession period here, highlighted in this lighter red, you can see kind of the low number dwelling units throughout this timeframe. On the other side of it, you can see the two peak periods of 2004 being 712 dwelling units per acre, and then 828 dwelling units per acre as of last year.
And those two numbers, if you look at 2018, the 536 single-family and the 290 multi, I wonder if they were just reversed possibly on that previous slide?
Possibly.
Could have been, yeah.
Yeah.
And this, for this table, it says to date, but it's actually as of, through the month of May. Obviously, now that we're in the City Council, we're updating up through August. And so preliminary, preliminarily, up through August of this year, what the Building Department has provided us is that there has been 858 dwelling units through August of this year, which equates to approximately 2,200 people being added to Pulse Falls in just the first eight months of this year. It is highly likely that Pulse Falls may add over 1,200 dwelling units during this year. With the aggressive growth rate that Jamie was discussing earlier, I mean, we can see potentially 3,000 people each year, if that growth continues each year, so 3,000 people per year. This graph also shows that the permit valuation fees per year, again, highlighting the recession area here, that the major decrease drew the recession, and then it comes and increases again. The orange is your project fees throughout the years. And so for these construction values, we can see that the total from 2001, 2010 is roughly 837 million. The total from 2011, 2020, we're looking at just over an estimated 1 billion. And then total from 2008 to 2013 is 322 million. And so to give you kind of some visual of the growth that's been happening here in Pulse Falls, I use our GIS portal as well to kind of use the sliding bar to show from 2015 to 2018, kind of what the physical aspect looks like of the change in the growth within the city. So here we can see we're located in the Tolmore area, and so 2015 to 2018, you can see all the changes with the housing being put into the Tolmore area. So that's quite a drastic change throughout. And then here you can see down in Montrose as well, and the new development that's happened from 2015 to 2018. And then looking north into the Crown Point subdivision, you can also see the growth as well. So mostly single-family homes, but this kind of lighter blue section here, this new development for, as you probably know, the apartment complexes that are going up currently. So with that being said, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions, either. Al?
When you have that number up there regards to building permits, how long does it take from a time somebody pulls a building permit to it's actually built? I know it probably varies, but is it three months, six months, a year?
It does vary, I believe, but John, would you have an answer for that one?
Yeah, so recently, I know that there's been anywhere between a six- to nine-month leg time from the time someone sells a house to the time they get the permit and it's deliverable to them. So I mean, it could be as late as one year for a single-family home. So, you know, if you're looking at the population estimates, the time we've decided to be consistent throughout this for analysis, at the time they pulled a permit, that's the only time we really have a, a good nexus in our system. I mean, you could, if you changed the modification to the time of CO, but that'd be harder to be consistent through, for an analysis purpose.
Okay. I guess what I was going back to is, we've, we've got this many permits, which then equates to a population increase of 2,200 people. I'm thinking, well, if all those building permits are under construction, we really haven't raised, but if it's being consistent, I, I get where you're coming from. Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you both. I will be talking with you as I get information ready for my presentation in November. I'm sure I'll be touching base with you to get, get the information I need to present, so thanks again.
Thank you.
Next item up is the Police Department Dispatch Center Upgrades Update.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Council, Pat Knight, Chief of Police. With me here is Charlene Holbrook, our Communications Director. We just wanted to give a quick update on the Police Department's Dispatch Center and the upgrades that have been going on in there the past several months. I think you'll get an idea of where we came from and to where we are today. We're extremely proud of the project. The, the radio upgrade is also finishing up nicely as well. But to give that presentation this evening, it'll be quick, I promise, but Charlene came in off vacation to do it, and probably appropriately so, since she was the spearhead behind this project. Really the visionary to get this project going, and just, it turned out, I couldn't be happier how it turned out. And easy for me just to get out of the way and let them do the work, so I'm going to do the same thing here, get out of the way and let her go.
Well, thank you for coming in on your vacation. I'm sure you wanted to spend it with us, so.
Yes, of course I did. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Charlene Holbrook, Communications Director, Pulse Falls Police Department. And I talk super fast, so slow me down if I start going too fast. It'll, it will be quick. So first, you know, just a little trivia, we were the first BSAP in Cootney County, and we were established in 1984. What do we do? We answer administrative and 911 calls for the Police Department for fire and medical in the cities of Pulse Falls and Rathrum, and we do that 24/7, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. We are Emergency Medical Dispatch, EMD certified, and we can give CPR instructions, deliver a baby, walk you through a heart attack, you know, that kind of stuff over the phone. Dispatch is also responsible for all paperwork within our department. Anything that comes through, rest packet citations, warnings, we do anything for the officer, DQs, RQs, which would be driver's queries and vehicle registrations. Calls for service, I just wanted to show that in 2003, we had, and calls for service total from 2008 to 2013 is 322 million. And so to give you kind of some visual of the growth that's been happening here in Post Falls, I use our GIS portal as well to kind of use the sliding bar to show from 2015 to 2018, kind of what the physical aspect looks like of the change in the growth within the city. So here we can see we're located in the Tolmore area. And so 2015 to 2018, you can see all the changes with the housing being put into the Tolmore area. So that's quite a drastic change throughout. And then here you can see down in Montrose as well, and the new development that's happened from 2015 to 2018. And then looking north into the Crown Point subdivision, you can also see the growth as well. So, most of these single-family homes, but this kind of lighter blue section here, this new development for, as you probably know, the apartment complexes that are going up currently. So with that being said, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions, either?
Al. When you had that number up there regards to building permits, how long does it take from a time somebody pulls a building permit to it's actually built? I know it probably varies, but is it three months, six months, a year?
It does vary, I believe, but John, would you have an answer for that one?
Yeah, so recently, I know that there's been anywhere between a six to nine-month lag time from the time someone sells a house to the time they get the permit and it's deliverable to them. So I mean, it could be as late as one year for a single-family home. So, you know, if you're looking at the population estimates, the time we've decided to be consistent throughout this for analysis, at the time they pulled a permit, that's the only time we really have a good nexus in our system. I mean, you could, if you changed the modification to the time of CO, but that'd be harder to be consistent through, for an analysis purpose.
Okay. I guess what I was going back to is we've got this many permits, which then equates to a population increase of 2,200 people. I'm thinking, well, if all those building permits are under construction, we really haven't raised. But if it's being consistent, I get where you're coming from.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you both. I will be talking with you as I get information ready for my presentation in November. I'm sure I'll be touching base with you to get the information I need to present, so thanks again.
Thank you.
Next item up is the Police Department Dispatch Center upgrades update.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Council, Pat Knight, Chief of Police. With me here is Charlene Holbrook, our Communications Director. We just wanted to give a quick update on the Police Department's dispatch center and the upgrades that have been going on in there the past several months. I think you'll get an idea of where we came from and to where we are today. We're extremely proud of the project. The radio upgrade is also finishing up nicely as well. But to give that presentation this evening, it'll be quick, I promise, but Charlene came in off vacation to do it, and probably appropriately so, since she was the spearhead behind this project, really the visionary to get this project going. And just, it turned out, I couldn't be happier how it turned out. And easy for me just to get out of the way and let them do the work, so I'm going to do the same thing here, get out of the way and let her go.
Well, thank you for coming in on your vacation. I'm sure you wanted to spend it with us, so.
Yes, of course I did. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Charlene Holbrook, Communications Director, Post Falls Police Department. And I talk super fast, so slow me down if I start going too fast. It will be quick. So first, you know, just a little trivia, we were the first B.S.A. in Cootney County, and we were established in 1984. What do we do? We answer administrative and 911 calls for the police department for fire and medical in the cities of Post Falls and Rathrum, and we do that 24/7, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. We are emergency medical dispatch, EMD certified, and we can give CPR instructions, deliver a baby, walk you through a heart attack, any of that kind of stuff over the phone. Dispatch is also responsible for all paperwork within our department, anything that comes through, rest packet citations, warnings, we do anything for the officer, DQs, RQs, which would be driver's queries and vehicle registrations. Calls for service, I just wanted to show that in 2003, we had, and calls for service are different than calls that come into the department, calls for service would be something we actually assigned an officer to, that they would go out and handle. Calls that we get into our dispatch center, we get about 225,000 approximately a year, and this would be actual calls for service that an officer would actually respond to. So in 2003, we had 22,139 calls, and in 2018, we had 40,870. That's an 85% increase for the last 16 years since we've been in the new building, and we're on track year-to-date right now, 27,801 calls for service, which is about, I think, 43 if I'm asked right, no, 3,400 calls a month, so we'll be ahead of that 40,000 at the end of 2019 if we stay on track. And prior to the remodel, this is what our dispatch center looked like, and I don't know, I have a little laser pointer, but if you can see, that's dispatch. We have six positions, that shows four of them, and we have partitioned walls, so we don't have a full wall in our dispatch center, or we did not have, and so it was super loud. We would have tours come through the building, or just administrative staff, or whoever walking the halls, and it would get super loud in dispatch. So that was one of the reasons we, you know, needed to upgrade our center. Very poor lighting, there's overhead lighting hanging in there, but it was behind us quite a bit, so didn't, you know, direct right on the desks. Computer screens were super small, and we couldn't see all of our officers and stuff on the screen that we needed to see. So we're, you know, scrolling through, and dispatch, you don't want to be scrolling through stuff. And then chairs were the biggest complaint. They had no back support, not ergonomic, and we had, at the time we did our dispatch remodel, we had four ECOs, Emergency Communications Officers, who were seeing a chiropractor on a daily basis, and at nighttime, some of them were laying in the floor because their backs were hurting so bad. So, which, that's not these chairs, these just happened to come in before the remodel was finished, so this is what we currently have, and they are ergonomic. Took us two years to pre-plan this remodel, but it went off without a hitch, and it wasn't just me who was working on it. Our IT administrator, John Mittman, he was right there alongside me, everything in dispatch, such as IT, our phone system, our radio system, and all of our software, so it really affected him. This is our temporary center. We had to move everything downstairs and displace patrol for six weeks while we remodeled the center and moved everything in. This is what it looks like in the new center now. We have a video wall, which we didn't have before. We had four 55-inch screens up on the wall, and then it's harder to see the desk, but they're bigger work surface, they move up and down, they have heating, they have air, they have, you can see the task lighting, everything on the screen, we can customize the size, so we can scroll through and see everything. And the project was expensive. Total remodel cost was $477,618.60, but $340,878.46 was grant-funded. City didn't have to match it or anything. That was all something that we got outside funding for, and then the city gave us $169,744. And we completed the project on budget and on time. Old, and I have a quick video just to kind of walk you through. All the old stuff being torn out. Okay, and that's it. Any questions?
Charlene, you talked about how there were no walls, it was noisy. I didn't see any walls on the last picture. Is it just designed differently to where it's quieter for you?
No, it has a complete wall now. So when you walk into the hallway before, you would walk into the door and turn right, and the partition walls were up about six feet all the way down the hall. It's a complete wall now.
Okay, but you're.
There's windows in there, so we're all enclosed with the door and everything.
Okay, I was thinking there were, it was noise amongst all the different dispatchers, but it was from the outside coming in?
From the outside coming in, yeah.
Steve?
This might be a dumb question, but if I'm on my cellphone and I dial 911, does it depend on what cell tower I'm being off of, whether it goes to Post Falls or the [inaudible]?
Or to Cootney County, yes, yeah, it does.
Okay. That wasn't so dumb.
Yeah, I just kind of wondered.
Questions?
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Good job. Mayor comments, I'd just like to remind everybody, school is back in session. I noticed I drove by one of the elementary schools today, and most everybody was going 20 miles an hour. But apparently somebody wasn't, because the officer behind me did a big U-turn and went